Okay, we are ready once again to call the special meeting to order August 4th, 2010, at 10:15. Clerk, please conduct the roll call.
Supervisor McCowen.
Here.
Supervisor Pinches.
Here.
Supervisor Smith.
Here.
Supervisor Colfax.
Here again.
Chair Brown.
Here. We're going to go forward to public expression. Public expression are for items not on the agenda, and we do have a speaker, Mr. Daniel Myers, and please restate your name for the record.
Thank you. My name is Daniel Myers. I'm here representing the Friends of the Navarro watershed and the Mendocino Redwood, Mendocino group of the Sierra Club. My issue is the gauge, water gauge in the Navarro River is in jeopardy because of a lack of funding. The gauge is handled by the USGS, but the funding comes half out of the governmental section in local funds. And right now, the Mendocino Redwood company is covering half of it. It's about $7,000, and the county is covering about $7,000. Roland Sanford indicates that it looks like they don't have the funding to do that, and that this gauge will be shut down October 1st for lack of funds. And I'd like to come and make a proposal to keep this gauge in operation. It's important in that the Navarro River is a very key river right now. It's going to have a temperature TMDL implementation plan, an action plan to fix the temperature problems in the river. It's going to be the first one in AB 2121 area, which is an area designated that's critical for an absence of proper in-stream flow, and it will be important for that. It was also a temperature listed to be corrected back in 2000. The state didn't do it. It's currently listed by the state to do it in 2021. In negotiations, they've agreed to, well, I believe, take action this year, this coming year, to work on the Navarro with their staff. And it's important from that standpoint. It's also, in the county general plan, one of the new items that's now listed, RM 12, indicates that the county supports the creation of a comprehensive plan for surface and groundwater resources in Mendocino County. The comprehensive plan should include the following components. One is assessing existing surface water resources, including water quality and in-stream flows. So I think we only have a couple gauges left in the county. This is a very important one, and I think we need to keep it in operation. The $7,000, I don't, this has just come up, but I believe that our organizations and private parties should be able to raise about half of this by October 1st, about $3,500, $3,700, something like that. And I would make a proposal, if we can do that, that the county go ahead and at least fund the rest of it, and that we keep this gauge going for one more year. And if we can do that, it would be a very progressive and positive step for the county to take. I don't know formally how to proceed with this, as to where to go, but I'm going to start on fundraising at this point to see what I can do, and I would ask for your consideration in looking for an answer from the governmental side on this, from the county. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? Public expression? Seeing no one, we'll move on to the items of the day. We have agenda items number two through four, so we have several actions dealing with a possible or proposed ballot initiative. So we're going to start with item number two, adoption of ordinance adding Chapter 5.160 of Title V to the Mendocino County Code imposing a county vital services transaction and use tax. County Council, we're going to need your...
Yes, Madam Chair, this is the second reading and final adoption of this proposed ordinance.
Correct.
It requires a four-fifths vote.
And is this the only item, two through four, that needs a four-fifths vote?
Yes.
Is that... Board members, do you have comment, or should we go to public comment? Seeing no one, we need to go to public comment. We invite the public to come up and speak on the proposed ballot initiative. If you desire to do so, please come forward, state your name for the record, know that you have three minutes.
Hello, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is Michael Weinberg. I'm from SCIU Local 10 to 1, and I'm pleased to be here today. I appreciate that the board thought this was important enough to schedule a special meeting to get together for this item, or for these items, excuse me. And this item is about maintaining county services as they are currently, as best as possible, and it's about providing the services for all county residents. And I think that the fact that the board has come this far says a lot about the commitment of the board supervisors to protect and defend the safety net services and the quality of life in Mendocino. And I think you're to be commended for coming this far, and hope that you'll continue on in supporting this measure. Residents overall are happy with county services, and that residents believe that the budget has been cut enough, and that residents are willing to consider whether to tax themselves. And I believe that if you go ahead and vote yes to place this item on the ballot, that residents will vote overwhelmingly for this, and will have a real good opportunity to continue to work to protect county services as they now exist. And so I close by saying let the voters decide. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Please come forward. Seeing no one, we'll bring back agenda item number two to the board. Supervisor Pinches.
I just thought it was kind of interesting, last night on the news, one of the Democratic proposals for the state budget is to reduce the sales tax in California roughly to a half, and transfer that from sales tax to income tax and other taxes. But if you followed the news late last night, I just thought that was interesting. So probably if that happened, it would make this tax increase more palatable for the people out there. I don't know what the, how far that's going to move along, but it was a Democratic proposal, and the Democrats control the state legislature, so it might have some, it might take off. I just thought I'd mention that.
Thank you. Supervisor Pinches. Anyone else?
You're looking for a motion, I guess, at this point, right?
Um, I, I think I am. Yes.
Well, I guess I'll step forward and put my fingerprints on it, so I'll make the motion.
Okay. The motion would be for the adoption of ordinance adding Chapter 5.160 of Title V to the Mendocino County Code for an election to present to the voters of the county a proposed ordinance titled "County Vital Services, Transaction Sales and Use Tax," and authorize the board chair to sign the same upon adoption, and send adopted copies to county council and assessor clerk recorder. So is that the motion? Supervisor Pinches?
That's the motion.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Supervisor Pinches, seconded by Supervisor Colfax. I'm going to ask for a vote by the button. Is any other supervisor want comment? Okay. This does require a four-fifths vote. We're going to take the vote now.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mitchell. Now we'll move on to agenda item number three, and that is the discussion and possible action, including adoption of resolution regarding proposed ballot initiative to impose a half-cent vital services transactions and use tax. County Council?
Yes, Madam Chair. Now that you've adopted the ordinance, in order to place it on the ballot, you have to adopt the resolution that's proposed, and once that's adopted, it will be forwarded on to the Elections Department.
Okay.
Still moved.
Second.
It's been moved by Supervisor Pinches, seconded by Supervisor McCowen, and that is the adoption of the resolution of the Board of Supervisors of the County of Mendocino, State of California, calling for an election to present to the voters of the county a proposed ordinance titled "County Vital Services, Transactions, and Use Tax," and ordering consolidation of said election with the statewide general election called for November 2nd, 2010, and send adopted copies to county council and elections. All right? We will vote by the button unless there's a comment.
Public comment.
Excuse me. Thank you. I was going quick. Okay, public comment. Anyone that would like to comment, please come forward. Thank you very much, supervisors. Seeing no one, Supervisor McCowen.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just a brief comment. Some people are getting the impression that the board is actually adopting the tax, and really what we're doing is taking the measures that are necessary to put the tax on the ballot so that the people have a choice to vote for it or against it. So presumably, if people want to try and prevent further cuts to county services, further layoffs, they'd be more inclined to vote for it, but that'll be a choice that the voters will make.
Thank you, Supervisor McCowen. I think that was a great statement and clarification. Any other comment? Okay. We do have the motion. We will vote by the button.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you, Mr. Mitchell. Now we'll move on to agenda item number four, which is discussion and possible action, including adoption of resolution of the Board of Supervisors of the County of Mendocino, calling an election to present to the voters of the county an advisory measure titled, "Shall 50% of any voter-approved county vital services, sales tax collected in the incorporated cities be shared with the cities through a tax revenue-sharing agreement and ordering consolidation of said election with the consolidated general election called for November 2nd, 2010?" County Council?
Yes, Madam Chair. Since the proposed initiative, which you are now voted to place on the ballot, is a general tax as opposed to a special tax, it cannot be, the board cannot decide how to utilize the funds until it's adopted, and you can't specify in detail how the funds are to be used. This proposed advisory measure is a measure that you can place on the ballot to assist you in determining whether or not you would like to share certain proceeds of the sales tax with the various cities involved. It's an advisory measure that's not binding on the board. It's simply there to allow the voters to give you their viewpoint on how you should utilize the funds. Again, this only takes a majority vote to put the advisory measure on the ballot.
Supervisors, comment? Go to the public, oh, Supervisor McCowen.
You can go to the public.
So, anyone from the public desiring to speak on this measure, please come forward. Please state your name for the record.
Chair, Wendy Roberts desiring to question about this measure. If the vote, I assume the voters would need to pass this advisory, and then it doesn't necessarily mean that half of the money would go to the cities, is that correct?
That's correct.
It is.
Advisory measure only.
Okay. So, that's what I wondered. So it leaves open the opportunity for negotiation of a more complete tax-sharing agreement, is that correct?
Depending on what the board would like to do.
Yeah. Just open the possibility of a more complete tax-sharing agreement.
I asked that same question, and it would be at the direction of the board.
I see. Thank you.
Yes, thank you. Okay, supervisor, or any more public comment? Didn't see you, Michael, I'm sorry.
Hello, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is Michael Weinberg. I'm from SCIU Local 10 to 1, and, excuse me, while I appreciate the spirit of the measure, or what I believe to be the spirit of the measure, that is to broaden the tent of supporters as it is, to help pass the sales tax measure, I believe that actually it endangers the passage of the sales tax measure as the voters believe that, believe in supporting county services, and if they are voting to pass the sales tax, that's what they're wanting to do, is provide for county services. If in fact the county wishes to share money, they're free to do that without this measure. The county is, the reason the county is choosing to, has chosen to place this measure on the ballot is because of a shortage of county revenue, and it's going to cost money to place this measure, which is not binding, on the ballot. And I think it just, it spends money needlessly, and it confuses voters. And the last point I want to make is that, or two points, is that, again, reiterate, you can share the money, any money you want through legal means without this, without any type of advisory measure. And for those who would believe that any city or collection of cities, by concerted action of the councils, could torpedo the matter, I would just remind you that 72% of the eligible voters reside in unincorporated Mendocino County. And so that if you were to believe that the vote, the votes could be done on geographic boundaries, then the county would, the county voters would still hold sway. And so I would urge you to not vote for this and reject this. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Please come forward. Seeing no one, we'll bring it back to the board. Supervisor Pinches?
Yeah, I don't support this. First of all, it confuses the, as the speaker said, it really kind of clouds the issue and confuses, and it probably makes a false promise to maybe the cities that can't really be withheld. This sales tax in its entirety, if it passes, is going to estimate to bring in roughly around $5 million. Now, when you take our roads, our public health, mental health, social service program, sheriff jail, DA, public defender, alternate public defender, probation, and libraries and museum, and you spread $5 million through those systems just to try to keep the ship afloat, $5 million isn't a lot of money. So to make a false promise to the cities that we're going to share part of it with you, you know, first of all, all city residents benefit from those programs and departments that I just named. You know, a city resident is also a county resident. So I don't believe, you know, this is not a silver bullet, a solve-all issue here. This is trying to keep, trying to keep the ship afloat, and hopefully the voters will support it. But to make a false promise, say we're going to enter into a sharing of the revenues with the cities, I think is, it clouds the issue, and is really a false promise. But, you know, and I certainly hope that as far as the tax-sharing agreements, especially the one with the county Mendocino and the city of Ukiah, which is in the process of moving forward, I don't, I don't think that'll interrupt that at all. So, but anyways, I don't support this measure.
Supervisor McCowen.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I also don't support putting this advisory measure on the ballot. I think it does have the potential to confuse people. And also, when Supervisor Smith and I met with our counterparts from the city of Ukiah on the, excuse me, on the tax-sharing issue, what they would be much more interested in would be a signed agreement that would specify sharing 50% of the revenue collected within their jurisdiction. And so if we are going to go down that path, and then we have this advisory measure on, if it fails, is that a way to come back and say, oops, the voters really don't want us to share? So I think if we're going to, if we have any intention of sharing the revenue collected within the cities, with the cities, we should move forward as soon as possible to adopt agreements to that effect, rather than have this advisory measure that I think could be confusing and misleading. So I would suggest we not move forward with the advisory measure, and instead have an agenda item discussing whether or not we want to actually reach agreements with the
Supervisor Colfax?
Well, I just want to express my support for what both supervisors have said before me. I think well expressed, and I think that's all that needs to be said. I think I covered succinctly and effectively. Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor. For myself, I am the only supervisor without a city within my district. I think both Supervisor Pinches and McCowen spoke well to the issue. I do want to see a tax-sharing agreement with cities, all cities, not just city of Ukiah, as we move forward into the future. And I think as well that this would be very confusing, and I do believe you do not want to have your hands tied. It is only 5 million, and we have four cities. I think that truly that's not a lot of money when you think long scope. I think the county needs the full sales tax, because it is very true of all the services the county provides for the cities. So therefore, I am not going to support this particular agenda item. Supervisor Smith?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I would like to just extend the comments of Supervisor McCowen, or extend the thought process in that we do have a tax-sharing committee set up with the city of Ukiah that has met intermittently and has talked about a variety of things with respect to tax-sharing. But to Supervisor McCowen's comments, some discussions have already begun to take place with respect to this, this sales tax issue, this proposed issue, this issue that now we have just voted unanimously to place before the voters. So in the interest of time, I would like, at our next agenda, to add, as I think council would say we could do, which is add this discussion to the tax-sharing committee's agenda, so we have the option of having that discussion, so we can bring back specific information to the board in a timely fashion. And all it would be, would be just a discussion point to extend the committee's ability to also include this conversation as a component of tax-sharing, similar to the other aspects of tax-sharing that we've already had. And that would be my suggestion, because of the short timeframe involved, that we have that as just as a discussion item for next, for next week. Would Supervisor McCowen agree with that?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Supervisor Pinches?
I don't know what's changed, but I'm going back almost four years now. When I first come on the board in this term, the other cities weren't interested at that time in the tax-sharing agreement, it was only the city of Ukiah. So I just thought I'd throw that out there.
Supervisor Smith?
Yeah.
Oh, Supervisor McCowen?
I think we're talking about different tax-sharing agreements.
Right.
The one with regard to the city of Ukiah is really a comprehensive discussion, and it's also true that the city of Fort Bragg and the city of Willets don't currently have the same development pressure, and so there isn't the same urgency to try and adopt a measure that, because the tax, tax-sharing measure is really a way to get to a position where you can have your land use planning decisions made on the basis of planning principles instead of who gets the money. So I think it's true, the city of Fort Bragg and city of Willets both said, no, we don't wish to be part of a countywide discussion, but we're watching with interest what happens with the city of Ukiah, and depending on the outcome of that, then that might be something they can build on. The specific revenue sharing that we're talking about now is simply how to share revenue from this proposed sales tax measure, should it pass. And I think that the cities would be interested if we initiate a discussion saying, gee, we're willing to share 50%. I don't know why the cities wouldn't agree to that. And I think it would help the measure to pass. So although I understand the points, while the county needs all the money, the cities, all of them, also have their own financial challenges, and I think they would welcome the opportunity to share in the proceeds. So I think we should have that discussion as a board.
Okay, Supervisor Smith?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yes, to Supervisor McCowen's point, all I'm suggesting is that we be able to have this as an agenda item next week, so the committee actually can bring back substantive information to the board with respect to the sales tax sharing option for this particular sales tax item. Again, time is of the essence. There's a tight, a short timeframe on this, addressing Supervisor McCowen's earlier comments. And there have already been a number of discussions, and my feeling has been if, that a number of these tax-sharing generalized discussions, specifics with the city of Ukiah, have really languished, as we all know over the years, for any number of reasons. But we really haven't had anyone step up into a leader, leadership position, and really put the cards on the table and say what they're willing to do. And everybody seems to be waiting for the other entity to do that, and I really think that that's why it stalled. Everyone is sort of hedging their bets, and it's kind of this push-pull dynamic that's... Everyone is sort of hedging their bets, and it's kind of this push-pull dynamic that's gone on for, for actually decades, and really nothing ever gets, in a substantive format, brought forward for real decision. And so I think this is the opportunity for the, for the Board of Supervisors to actually show leadership on a tax sharing issue. So all I'm suggesting is we bring it back next week, because if we don't, if we don't bring it back with, and have the, the ability to bring back some specifics with regard to what the cities, their role in this, what they, what they would like their participation to be, I don't think we can do that, that issue justice prior to the election. I think we really are obligated to do that. So I would like to, to have that option, and the board can vote it up or down. But I think that we really need to be able to have that discussion, and that's the best way to do it.
Well, I, I really find it strange that there, there isn't any communication from any of the cities, and I certainly think they know this has, was scheduled for the agenda today. And previous, previously on another issue, you know, I took the word. It was, got to be he said, she said, whatever, without any real documentation. I'm willing to have the bigger discussion at our upcoming board meeting. I do want to remind supervisors, we have an ad hoc that's working right now, but we do have General Government Committee, and actually, it's two supervisors of the same, representing both with the city of Ukiah and the committee, Standing Committee on General Government. But that's not the issue here, and that's going to take deeper discussion next week. Supervisor Pinches?
Well, it's real clear, first of all, nothing's going to change in a week. What's, what's really the, kind of the elephant in the room here is the Ukiah Valley Area Plan. The way it stands right now with the, with the failure of Measure A to eliminate the Masonite, former Masonite site property to allow any commercial out there, that puts the city of Ukiah, basically, it drives all any sales tax revenues into the city of Ukiah. So there's no incentive right now for the city of Ukiah to join in with a sales tax sharing agreement. If the UVAP changes, and the county decides to allow some areas, some zoning changes to the north end of the valley, or even to the south end of the valley for, for that matter, to allow for some commercial development, which would bring in sales tax, then I'm sure the city would rush back to the table and say, hey, we want an agreement because we want to share in that. But right now, the city of Ukiah has all the apple in the Ukiah Valley. So they're really waiting, there's no incentive for them to move forward with the sales tax sharing agreement, because they have all the pie. So maybe that'll change with the UVAP, I'm not sure. I don't, I don't know if the votes are on the Board of Supervisors to allow any commercial development in the outland areas of, for instance, the North Ukiah Valley. So that's why there's not going to be any change in a week or probably a month. But there is some reluctance to move forward without knowing what the Ukiah Valley Area Plan adopted into the general plan is going to entail.
Well, Supervisor Pinches, I would like to inform you, maybe you've forgotten, there's also a big issue with the city of Ukiah's sphere of influence. So that plays a very large role.
Exactly. Where the line, where the boundary lines are going to be, exactly.
Yeah, and I don't want to get into that today, because that's off agenda. Supervisor McCowen?
Well, I will add a comment that when you look at the short-term financial interest to the city, it's true, if they only considered that, they would not have an incentive to reach a sales tax sharing agreement. But I believe that a solid majority of the city council, if not unanimously, supports moving forward with revenue sharing, because they understand that's the only way that we're going to get to a position where we can have planning in the Ukiah Valley based on planning principles instead of who gets the money. So they, they're willing to take something of a loss in the short-term financial picture to get to a place where we can have a logical discussion about why a development should take place in one location and not another, and how services will be provided, and that type of thing. So I don't think there's the lack of interest that, that you might perceive. But again, what we will be talking about next week is really a separate subset of the discussion.
So Madam Chair, it would be my suggestion that you poll the board to determine whether or not there's consensus to direct staff to bring back an agenda item for next week. And it would be my recommendation that that agenda item would be to decide whether or not you want to expand the role of the ad hoc, the current tax sharing ad hoc committee.
Well, I guess my question is too, why wouldn't we ask the voters what they think? So if this goes around next week, do we still have time to put this on? We wouldn't.
No. No. You have to vote up or down the advisory measure today in order for you to meet the appropriate deadlines.
Supervisor Smith?
Madam Chair, just as another piece of, sort of of clarification, the cities really have been, there have been a number of discussions out there. I think that the cities have not yet organized or taken any formal position. I think that truly they are watching our process, and, and until our vote, you know, moments ago, we really didn't have an item going forward on the ballot. It was still in the process, in the process of our decision-making. So I think the cities truly are looking at it, and I think to Supervisor Pinches' comments about the elephant in the room, I think, again, as Supervisor McCowen said, this, this tax discussion is a subset of a bigger one. The elephant in the room on, on this one, for the cities, is that two of them have, Fort Bragg and Ukiah, have tax measures that will be sunsetting in the next couple of years. So they, they're looking overall at their tax structure. As we know, this tax measure is wall-to-wall in the county. It includes the cities as well as the unincorporated areas. So even though we, we, based on the Revenue and Taxation Code, are taking the only steps we can to create a sales tax increase for the unincorporated areas, it does impact the cities. So I think the, the, part of this subset is that they have these tax measures, which is part of their tax structure, that they worked very hard to pass. Those are sunsetting, and they're going to, they're going to need to figure out, in this ever-changing and volatile economy that we have, what they're going to do about that. So our actions clearly impact theirs. I think, again, it's about partnership, it's about leadership, and I think if we just are able to have the committee bring back more information to the board, we can, we can keep going down the path of, of having these discussions. But I think it seems like we unanimously agree that the, and I hadn't spoken to that, but I also concur with the four of you, that the advisory measure is not really the way to proceed. I, I think as, it could be confusing to the voters, it's not binding, it seems rather pointless to do that. But I think that there are some substantive discussions with respect to taxation relative to the cities, that we need to, we need to go down that path, and we need to do it as quickly as possible. Hence, I would support council's recommendation of how one would structure it for our next meeting.
I do have one, a comment I want to make. I would not favor county council, the ad hoc committee, tax sharing committee at this time. I would more favor standing committees such as General Government, so there's transparency for the public that does want to engage, so.
Okay, well, that discussion should happen next week when it's been properly agendized.
Supervisor Colfax?
Well, it seems to be a little bit of concern about what, what, what elephant is in the room. So let's, let's have a third one, okay? And one is the, what could be confusing is why is there such an urgency at this particular juncture to have this on the agenda next week? I think that could be a further confusing move, and I think part of the motivation for having that discussion now is to kind of smooth the waters and let, send a message to the cities that we are interested in, just because we don't have this as part of this particular measure, we are interested in a tax sharing agreement. I do not think that the timing is particularly propitious. I think that it may, in fact, inadvertently link the two in the public mind, who don't pay detailed attention to the machinations of this particular board at this juncture. So I, I would think that we could let that item simmer in the proper committee, get more clarification, and get some of the parameters of this brought forward. Supervisor Pinches raises some concerns. He's got his elephant, somebody else has another elephant, and I've got a third elephant saying that, so with all those elephants in the room, I'd like to just see the clearing of the, of the zoo and not move forward with this for a while.
Again, Madam Chair, what you have before you right now is, is the resolution to place an advisory measure on the board.
Correct.
I mean, on the ballot. So you need to take action on that, vote it up or down now. And then you need to decide whether or not you want to direct staff to bring back an agenda item. Any further discussion on whether you should have a committee or not should not happen today. It should be properly agendized.
I understand. Supervisor Pinches?
I think I have a solution to this. If we just tabled this item, number four, that would keep it off of the ballot, right? Because we missed the deadline, right? So if we just tabled the item, that will keep it off the ballot, which we all seem to want. And, and, but it doesn't let the issue go away, and we can bring it back.
Supervisor Pinches, I think we need to vote this up or down.
I would recommend that.
And then, whatever happens with the vote, whatever, who, what the motion is going to be, then we can discuss how to go forward after that vote. Supervisor McCowen?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I move that we not place the advisory measure on the ballot.
Second. Okay, it's been moved by Supervisor McCowen, seconded by Supervisor Smith. I think the motion was short, simple, and understood. We will be voting by the button.
Motion passes unanimously.
Okay, supervisors, what is your recommendation as to how we go forward? Supervisor Smith?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I, I think that we ought to bring back as general of, of, of an agenda item for next week, to have a discussion with as much latitude. Madam Chair, you suggested the General Government Committee. It's been offered that it would be appropriate to put it and extend the tax sharing ad hoc committee. I think, I, I think that we could leave it to staff to create a generalized agenda item if there are any, between now and when that goes forward, if there are any other materials that come forward that are germane to that, those could be included. And then we have the discussion in a week and see where we go with it. So I think just a general agenda item that talks about some latitude of action on that point would probably be the best at this point, so we can move on today.
Thank you, supervisors. Supervisor Pinches?
Well, I agree with that, but I really believe it should go into a standing committee, because for the simple reason, standing committee's open to the public, where ad hoc is not. And this is going to be a huge issue, and so the public needs to be involved right from the start.
Madam Chair, we can prepare an appropriate agenda that will allow you those various options.
Okay.
If so, directed.
Okay. We will go on from there and go to item number five, discussion direction regarding utilization of a citizens advisory group to work with the executive office to make recommendations regarding improved financial and operational management practices.
Excuse me, Madam Chair, I wasn't clear, is the board directing us to bring back an agenda item?
I thought, yes.
Okay.
Yes. I thought it was, and I thought you said as directed. Okay. I'm sorry, I probably should have repeated that, but I thought you understood that by your statement. Okay, we're on to agenda item five. I just read it into the record. Supervisor McCowen, you are the sponsor of this particular item. Go forward, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just a brief recap of the agenda summary. We did get a letter from a local organization offering to provide assistance to the executive office in reviewing the budget and, I think, the operations of the county. I think the idea has merit to have a citizens advisory group or committee. The way I would envision it, it would not be limited to one organization. It would be a, a group that would be selected by the chief executive officer, representing the geographical diversity of the county, bringing together people who have budgetary or business experience that might be relevant, and they would operate under parameters established by the executive office, with the goal of seeing if there are recommendations that could be made that we might not otherwise be considering. I don't personally see a downside to it, as long as the executive office is in control of the process, and therefore in control of how much staff time is devoted to it. Potentially, it gets some suggestions in front of us that we might not otherwise see.
Okay, board member questions of Supervisor McCowen? Supervisor Pinches?
I don't really have questions. I got a couple of comments.
Okay. Go forward.
Well, this is my eighth budget year process, and every one of them has been totally open to the public. There's been numerous meetings, probably as far as our budget in this, in this previous six months. We've had more agenda items pertaining to our budget process and how we move forward than any time in the past seven years. I appreciate the interest in the, want to help from the employers' council, and I, I totally support that, and I'm totally open to them or any other organization getting all the documents or making all the documents and coming up with suggestions. But I really feel, because when you open the, the budget document itself, the proposed budget, it's a very complex document that involves a lot of funding streams and a lot of, you know, it's not as simple as saying, well, we want to give the sheriff more money, so we'll take some money out of the road fund to do that. You know, the funding streams are separate, and it's very intricate. What I would be afraid of is if this committee, it would be more or less a, you know, we have a short staff in the CEO's office right now, trying to meet our budget objections. And it would be more of a, kind of like going-to-school issue, rather than trying to come up with suggestions. As far as any organization coming forward with any specific budgetary suggestions of, whether it's to close the library, to fund, to fund a couple of deputies, or, or to do any of these other options, people, everybody has that option and has had that option totally within the terms that I've been here. So I don't think that restricts anything coming forward with recommendations. But I think it would really convolute the process to, to have a citizens group, and you know, and then, and then which citizens? Would this board be happy if it, all of a sudden, it come up, say, with three or four citizens that was totally supportive of one budget item that the board didn't support? You know, we are, that's why we expend a lot of money on elections here in this county. Every two years, there's a Board of Supervisors elections that elect either two or three members. And the people have their time to choose in the process. If, if they're not supportive of me representing them, then throw me out. And that's what the people do. And we do it every two or three years. So I just think this would convolute the process. First of all, I don't think there's nothing wrong with the budget process we have. We have open meetings, we, you know, we have open meetings before we adopt the proposed budget, and we certainly have open meetings before we adopt the final budget. And the public has every way, and, and if you read the budget document from last year on the front page when I was the chair, I ended the comments by saying, hey, if you got any questions or you need any documents, come to see me, I'll make sure that I get them to you. So there's no, nobody's hiding anything or anything, especially under the Public Records Act. So I appreciate everybody's support and want to, and want to come in and help. It's, it's really great. But I think we have a pretty good process set up right now, and it's functioning well. Matter of fact, if you compare Mendocino County's budget process and Mendocino County's budget results with any other county in the state, I think we're right at the top of the heap.
Supervisor Pinches, I do agree with some of your remarks.
Some of them?
Some of them. But there's always room for improvement. But if you look at the second bullet point under the summary of request, just establishing the committee, the criteria for who is part, who isn't, basically, going through that process will take forever. We started the 2010-11 budget year and going through that process back last spring. I, I just don't, I cannot support this at this time, given where we are in time. And I would like to hear from the public and what their comments are. like to hear from the public and what their comments are, unless you'd like to speak, okay. And I'd also like to hear from our Chief Executive Officer on this matter, but first I'd like to hear public comment. So anyone desiring to speak, please come forward. I see two people. Come forward, state your name for the record.
Mark Johnson, representing the Employers Council. I think we've heard a comment already that the local organization referenced in the agenda item was a letter from the Employers Council, and one of the focal points of what we're trying to do is form a small group of people from the private sector who could give advice on specific budgetary adjustments that may be recommended by the end of August as part of the next round of budget cuts. So that was our focus on what we were proposing here, and I'd be happy to respond to questions, but we weren't really anticipating a large committee that would have ongoing, parallel budget deliberations with the county's normal process.
I guess I want to respond back to the fact that there is a public process, and you can use that public process to make recommendations, and I do believe that staff is always open to hearing, especially our CEO, and hearing from different groups and from the public about budget items. I don't see that that would stop.
No, and we're not suggesting, we're not criticizing that process, we're simply suggesting that we'd like a small number of our Board members to be able to access documentation, make direct recommendations that the CEO could, I'm sorry.
That's all right, I've done that myself.
So if I can kind of get back on track here.
Sure.
The idea was to try to review the specific budget cuts that would be recommended by the end of August.
Okay, thank you. Please come forward, Ms. Polly, state your name for the record.
I'm Diane Polly, and I'm speaking as the retired Political Action Chair of the Farm Bureau, and I'm speaking with a kind of a sour taste in my mouth, unfortunately. A number of years ago, I think maybe as many as 15 or 20, the Farm Bureau formed a larger group, it was a wonderful, dynamic group called the Private Enterprise Network, and from that came the kind of thing that you people are considering right now, called the Public-Private Partnership, and what it was, was a choice group of people, and it was some very respected business leaders, et cetera, to come up with some ideas about how the county could be better run, et cetera. Well, after much work on their part, it was put on the shelf. I think it would be very difficult to get the quality of people that you're going to want on this committee to give up their time and effort for this circumstance. I just think they would be very skeptical and absent, so I'm not real enthused about this idea. I think the idea of getting, for instance, financial people to look at the long-run, long-term debt is a pretty good one, but that's a very specific niche, but in general, we've done it before, and it was not accepted by the county, so I'm not real enthused.
Thank you, and I well remember that process, because I was the staff person to that countywide committee. Thank you.
Hi, Ann Mulgarde, speaking for myself as a resident. I just want to echo what Ms. Polly was saying, that democracy certainly has merit, we all like democracy, but budgets are so specific that it would be really, really difficult to get good input across the Board, but I do think that there is a lot that citizens have to offer on specific issues. So I would want to study how have we in the past, without putting it on the shelf, or how have other counties used local expertise really smartly, because I do think that's a way to expand our knowledge base, because, I mean, none of us think that we have all the answers. So expanding our knowledge base in certain ways is great, but I also want to remind you that it costs money to save money. I mean, to have a process that is effective usually takes a highly skilled, paid facilitator to figure out the ground rules and make sure that things aren't going to end up on the shelf. So I would encourage the Employers Council and everybody else to come forward, but I would want, if there were other committees set up, I would want them to be very thoughtful and of multiple political persuasions, not just looking at geography, but also looking at political perspectives.
So your estimation, how long would you think it would take to come up with the process, because we have a budget to pass here real soon?
I think it would be hopeless for this year. I wouldn't bother for this year, I would just take individual comments that came forward based on what's already happened and based on all the public documents. I think it would kind of throw things into chaos for such a short amount of time, and it wouldn't result in anything useful.
Thank you very much for your comment. Please come forward.
Well, I couldn't agree more with what Ann just said, and Wendy Roberts, for the record. The one thing I want to say is that I attended the budget hearings at the end of last summer, and it was a long process, you could have had a paintball fight in here without incurring any dry cleaning bills, people just weren't present. And if people, groups or individuals want to come, I can absolutely say, any questions I had were more than thoroughly answered, two of you volunteered your entire packets so that I could see all of the backup. I think you've got something right now where you're extremely responsive to people who want to see this, and the economy has created an environment where there may be more people taking advantage of that. I think that will be to the good, but to create a convoluted, expensive, and time-consuming committee for this purpose, I do not believe would improve the process.
Thank you.
I have a question.
Ms. Roberts?
Have you attended paintball fights?
Well...
I mean, the metaphor is great, but I just...
Well, you know, when you go to as many swim meets as I do to spend time with your grandchildren, you hear about a wide variety of activities.
Thank you. Sorry, I couldn't resist that.
Loved it.
If we would volunteer as the targets, perhaps we could raise some revenue.
Anyone else? Seeing no one come forward, we're going to bring this back to the Board, I do want to hear from the CEO. Supervisor Pinches?
Just a final comment, Madam Chair, if I may. You know, the budget is, if you want to deal with balanced budgets and just a budget, you can do that with a $10 add-in machine real easy, but what we're doing here with our budget process is the funding of priorities, and you set your priorities and then you attach the dollars that you have available to that funding priority. And there's only one outfit that can do that in Mendocino County, and that's your elected representatives. No matter who you put up there in the private sector, they might be the greatest ladies or gentlemen in the world, and great business people, everything, but they were not elected by the public, and so it's the public members that have to set the priorities for the public, and that's why we have to have the process the way it's set up. You know, if it was just a simple, like I say, idea of putting the numbers to where your revenues match your expenditures, you can do that with a $10 add-in machine in a day, no big deal. But the budget process is about funding your priorities, and then the budget is just the work plan that you're going to follow out, follow for the following year, how you're going to implement your priorities. So there's a big difference than just making your debit side equal your credit side. Thank you.
Ms. Angelo?
Madam Chair, members of the Board, thank you, and I've appreciated the comments from our public, I find them to be very appropriate to actually what I wanted to say in regards to this item today. I think what we're really talking about is citizen engagement, and how do we get the most citizen engagement in our budget process, knowing that every time we talk about reducing or eliminating a service, we're not talking about that service just for us up here, but for the 90,000 people in this county, and it's important to you as much as it's important to us. I think there's been a lot of effort that has occurred over the past few months, and I would agree with some of the comments made by the Supervisors about the process that we've had. I think we have had more budget workshops since December of '09 than I've seen in my three-year tenure here, and there's been lots of reasons for that. Along with that, we've had the departments working with the Executive Office, we've been examining and reexamining our budget and how we can streamline, and I think what the community and this Board will see over the next year and through fiscal year 11-12, that we will continue to work on streamlining the organization, and certainly with the input of the community. When it comes to citizen engagement and the idea of a Citizens Advisory Committee, I think that there are other ways to engage the community other than having the process of a Citizens Advisory Committee. Being that I've put together a committee like this in the past, I can echo the comments by Madam Chair Brown about the coordinating of the calendars, choosing the citizens who are representative of the full county, gathering the background information, and then also we would want the department heads to come in and make presentations. It would be a very lengthy process, and the last Citizens Advisory Committee that I put together was on a fast track, and it took six months, from the time we put it together to the time we made recommendations to the Board. So in order to do it right, and I know that this Board would want it done right, it would take a much longer process than I think the amount of time we have. So let me just tell you what we are doing, so everybody's very clear. When we talk about the community process, one of the activities that we're taking on is the community focus groups to review strategic areas for priority setting and public policy development, and as this Board knows, the consultant that we plan on utilizing, and I met with every Board member to discuss that community process, and we plan on implementing this in the fall, and of course, on August 17th, we will be back before this Board to discuss that community process around priority setting and public policy development. And our goal is to have focus groups within the different areas in the community, and to bring that information back to this Board in January, and I realize that's for fiscal year 11-12, but believe me, we will still be dealing with some of these issues for fiscal year 11-12. So again, as far as a community process, we will be doing that process with this Board's direction, starting in the fall. Chair Brown, did you have a question?
Yes, what was the Board date that you said you'd be back?
August 17th.
August 17th.
Yes.
I just want to make sure everybody knows that.
Right, and I'm not certain what time that will be, I'm assuming it will be in the morning, but that will be about an hour-long discussion with this Board about the specific areas that we would want to glean information from the community. And the other activity that we're doing, you know, this again is a community process, someone had mentioned about budget experts. Sherry Schatmeyer, the Treasurer-Tax Collector, and myself will be co-chairing a committee. This will be the Debt Committee. I believe that we've talked about this with this Board in the past, and what we want to do is really look at the overall county budget and the overall county debt, and so we will have other representatives on the Debt Committee, we will have our Retirement Administrator on the Debt Committee, we will be talking about the overall picture of the county and what we can do to reduce down our debt and to really look at the structural imbalance in this county and bring some policies and some positions forward to this Board for decisions. Our goal is to have some of our community partners on our Debt Committee, and I would say that that would be the committee to really look at for those fiscal experts that would be interested in working with us and participating in that process. So I think with the activities that we have going forward, the community process and the Debt Committee, I think that there are opportunities for members of our public to engage in our process, and as far as citizen engagement, I think we're there. My recommendation would not be a Citizens Advisory Committee at this point in time.
Thank you, Ms. Angelo. Supervisor Smith?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I think that the CEO gave a good explanation of the direction of where this is going, which does talk about citizen involvement, and as Supervisor Pinches said, there's a wealth of information available through our published documents, more and more as we move forward, that information is available online. So I think that, and as Supervisor Pinches said, he has said to individuals, if you can't get the information you're looking for, let me know, and I'll make sure that you get it. The CEO/ Clerk of the Board staff I think are very good at, if there are specific requests about specific things that one can attain, either getting you the direction to obtain those materials or in fact just obtaining them for you, so I think there are some avenues. This Supervisor actually proposed some of the things that our CEO was talking about at the beginning of this calendar year, and I think this Supervisor felt that these community focus groups needed to happen sooner rather than later, they needed to happen, you know, in concert with the Board stating in very general terms, we would be moving towards 100 layoffs, we would have to find this 11 million or slash, depending on the particular way of looking at it, 7 million budget shortfall that needed to be obtained. I felt we needed to get input from individuals from a wide spectrum sooner rather than later. So I understand the point of the Employers Council in their letter and reviewing their letter, I understand where they're trying to go, but I think there are these other avenues that we, in which we can achieve those goals, and I think the Debt Committee is something that we need regular reporting to the Board on, but this Supervisor also suggested, and I think it still would work well, in concert with what's going on, and it's a twofold thing. I had suggested even to our prior CEO that we really get an external evaluation of our debt picture, both the pension obligation debt, the TETER Plan, the core debt components of our budget. There are not many of them, there really are several of them, that would in essence sort of begin to address the structural deficit we talk about, but having that externality of legitimacy, I think, is an important component, and I still believe that in some fashion we should be doing that. I believe that that would be value-added for our budget process, for now in this case, the Debt Committee rolling forward. Having an external view on very short order, a very time-specific, short task, to really look at that, and how does our structural debt measure up to, in particular, other rural California counties of our size? Where are we? So I still think that it would be valuable at this juncture to have that, and I'd suggested that again, as I said, to our previous CEO, it was never acted upon, I still think it would be good to have, and I think we could do it with limited resources on a very short-term basis, and it would be good to bring that forward to our internal process. Again, trying to address some of the concerns that we have here on the Citizens Advisory Group concept brought forward by Supervisor McCowen, what I would suggest as an alternative way to deal with that is taking some of the suggestions the CEO has and is now acting on, the Debt Committee, the community focus groups, and I believe that we really ought to have a set of community meetings as we go down the budgetary path, and perhaps after the adopted budget, prior to the very difficult job we have for the following fiscal year. And I think that it would be very, very content-laden and have these as evening meetings to the community, so the community understands in general the budgetary process, what we're facing, the shrinking state revenue, and the structural issues that we're dealing with, what's being, you know, and these are very, very significant challenges, and then it gives the county the opportunity to say how we're coping with these very challenging issues that structurally we really don't have any short-term answers for. So I think community meetings to address this, once we're a little further along in the process, would provide more transparency, it would be really taking the information to the public instead of just having the public needing to come to us to ask for specific information. So the CEO brought to us yesterday in Covelo the specifics on three meetings that are happening internally on the budgetary process for staff, so in a sense, I'm thinking of that perhaps three community meetings, coastal, Yucaya Valley, and North County, that would do just that. After the closure of our budget, we're down the path with our community focus groups and debt picture, taking the community, taking to the community substantive information with charts and graphs and specifics about where we've been, where we are, and the challenges we're facing, and I think it takes it right to the community to engage with them, get their suggestions, get feedback, and give more information to them in their communities. So I would suggest something like that going forward.
And I'd like to respond, Supervisor Smith, to, in a wonderful world that we're not in today, where we have quite a bit of staff, people... not in today, where we have quite a bit of staff, people available to do all this work. We don't today. In fact, staff is just having a hard time getting regular work out and being able to keep up with all of the documentation, the posting of, of legal notices, notifications to the public. I mean, we are really struggling to get work done. And to me, that, that does add a whole layer of work. I, I don't know if Ms. Angelo will want to comment on that. But certainly, we do have very basic duties. We do have the budget hearings in that particular process where people can engage. I think our CEO has been very open to going and speaking to groups on the whole budget process, budget cuts, recommended cuts, where we are in the process. I, I just think we're doing all we can with the staff that we have today, the resources that we have. So for me, it's, it's really difficult, but I really appreciate your comment. Supervisor McCowen.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Well, I tend to agree that we're doing all we can with the staff and the resources that we have. And that's why I find it curious that we're turning down an offer of free help, and somehow this gets translated into it would be a very expensive, drawn-out process. The timeline that has been set for this is end of August to have participation in the current budget process, be able to make recommendations for our consideration. It's not shifting the responsibility of who makes the decisions. That does rest with us. But I continue to maintain that our decisions are no better than the information that we have. And I see no harm in opening up the process with a modest investment of staff time in order to be able to get some additional suggestions from people who would be viewing the process from a different perspective than we or staff are likely to view it. And it's been an informative discussion. I hadn't realized that our current budget process was so effective. We learned recently that the county has had a structural deficit since '05. So using the current effective budget process, we adopt a balanced budget every year, which then falls off the rails. And then we're scrambling, at least the last two years since I've been here, we're scrambling to try and balance the current fiscal year budget, and based on the numbers futilely, because we have not, at the end of the year, had a balanced budget, at least since '05. But it's easy to see that this idea isn't going anywhere. So I will withdraw the item from further discussion at this time.
Supervisor Pinches.
Just as the Press Democrat this morning reports, the Sonoma County Board of Supervisors approved unanimous vote to borrow 300, $290 million as a pension obligation bond. And I think it said they had four people there to comment. Could you imagine if we proposed to borrow 290 million, or even 29 million dollars, how many people would be in this room to comment on that? I, my point is, I think that this board and our budgetary process and how we spend our money is closely watched by the residents of Mendocino County, and that's a great thing. That's a great thing. But also, you know, we can talk about the county's debt all we want. We have about the best rates we're going to get. We can't refinance. We're at the best rates we're going to. And we can talk about it all we want. But that date debt is only going to go away one way, if that's we, that we make our interest and principal payments on the amortization schedule.
We're no longer talking about the item on the floor.
Supervisor Smith.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Well, just to follow up, Madam Chair, on your comments, I, what I'm proposing is not the, the concept of three community meetings. First of all, it would be one format. So it's really, it's going to be material that they're going to be developing anyway with respect to the debt committee and the internal process. I think it's just basically taking it out to the community. Most of us at this level, we certainly are not working on the clock. So I feel that community evening meetings, this supervisor would be more than happy to attend one or more of them. And I just think it, it would be a very proactive thing to do. And I think that, you know, we could have the auditor attend, the CEO, a budget person, one or more supervisors. And, you know, it's, it's just, to me, part of the work that, that we all do anyway, working long hours. And I, I just think it would be a great thing that could really take us forward after we have the adopted budget. And as the CEO's moving through this community process, it would be sort of an adjunct to that. And I, I just think it's something we really ought to consider doing. And I think it would help the community understand the debt process more. Thank you.
County Council?
No.
Anything?
No one else? The item has been removed from considerate, further consideration. And we will be adjourning to closed session and then coming back and reporting out of closed session, reconvening at the end.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Excuse me. There are no items for closed session today unless the clerk knows of anything.
Okay.
No closed session.
All right. I was only going by the agenda. I guess I didn't turn the page. Okay. So public, there will be no closed session. Yahoo, I can go see my granddaughter at the fair, show her pygmy goat. Okay, so we are going to adjourn for the day, and that is 11/29.